Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Stand for the singing of "O Canada."
(Singing) O Canada, our home and native land, true patriot love in all thy sons command. With glowing hearts we seeking art, the true north strong and free. From far and wide, O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land, glorious and free. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Okay, record of attendance. Jody, thank you, you've got that. Declarations of conflict of interest, anyone? Not yet. Approval of agenda, any additions or deletions? So I have 11A at Fire Department Tender, Pumper, Rescue. I am taking off 8A. Going to remove that for now. That was the only one I had thought of, and that is Counselor Dennis. Go ahead.
I just want to add, it's just going to be a question on the Gleep Street parcade.
Okay, Gleep Street, you're going to be 11B. Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
I want to, at 11C, is give a little preamble now. Want to consider adding another member to our Waterfront Development Corporation by the name of Derek Robertson. He was on our list for consideration and ended up not being on the committee. So just for consideration under 11C, please.
11C, good. Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. 11D, just a quick congratulation and acknowledgement, please. Thank you.
Good, you're 11D. CAO, you're almost there.
Thank you, your worship. I have three items, and the good news is they're all deletions.
Oh, okay.
I'd like to delete item 7B. Staff would like to have more time before we bring that forward for first reading.
Construction noise?
Right, construction noise by law.
7B coming off.
I'd like to take 8C off. As you can see, the document wasn't ready for this evening, so we'll complete that, bring it forward. And I'd like to delete 8D.
8D response, okay? Good.
Getting shorter all the time.
7B, 8C, 8D. Good. Counselor Dennis, your light's still on.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Go ahead, Counselor Langel.
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to delete item 8K because I matter how I understand, that's now in the works that we have a CFest parade, so we don't need that. And there are, with Counselor's permission, there are three recommendations from yesterday's Communities in Bloom Committee.
Okay.
That you have before you that are a little, I apologize what we had to meet yesterday, and they're, I would like to have put under Committee Reports.
So that usually, can I put that under 9BC? Is that where that would go, like right after you do Heritage?
Yes.
Okay, so let's do that. 9BC, it's on the second page there, and we're going to put Communities in Bloom. Good? Anything else, anyone? Moved and seconded, any discussion? Questions being called. All those in favor of the agenda with the changes?
Aye.
Going to need someone from this side of the room. Counselor Mooney, you're only allowed to aye once.[273.77][273.77](Laughter) But thank you for filling in.[277.02][277.02](Laughter) I thought it was pretty good, I have to say. Do you do that at golf?[284.83][284.83](Laughter) Okay, all those in favor, aye. Okay, so the agenda is good. Okay, approval of minutes. I have the regular meeting of Town Council, April 16th, 2015. Moved and seconded, moved by Counselor Dennis, seconded by Deputy Mayor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Committee of the Whole, April 21st, 2015.
So moved.
Moved Counselor Mooney, second Counselor Dawes.
Question.
Questions being called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Committee of the Whole, April 23rd, 2015.
I would move to accept this, April 28th.
23rd, Counselor Dawes, moved by Counselor Dawes. Want to second that? Counselor Dennis seconds it. Any discussion? Questions being called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Committee of the Whole, April 28th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Mooney, seconded by Counselor Dawes. Any discussion?
Questions?
Questions being called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. And Town Council, April 30th, 2015.
So moved.
Moved by Deputy Mayor.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Mooney. Questions being called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Thank you. Thanks, Counselor Dennis. Business arising, 2015-16 budget for approval. CAO?
Thank you, your worship. So Council as Committee of the Whole has met on several occasions since the first of the calendar year to work on the operating budget, capital budget, grants to organizations, and so on. So at the last Committee of the Whole meeting, I believe we reached consensus on the operating budget for the town of Yarmouth. And so I have a fairly long list of rates and so on that I can read off in the form of a motion. Obviously, I can't make the motion, but I'd be happy to read it if you wish.
That's appropriate.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, so the Council, the motion would be, if somebody would make it, that Council accept a budget with revenues in the amount of $17,248,600 and expenses of $17,246,496 for an overall surplus of $2,104 for its general operations for the year ended March 31st, 2016, which provides for the following rates. Residential property rate, $1.71 per $100 of assessment. Commercial property rate, $4.39 per $100 of assessment. Resource general rate of $1.71 per hundred of assessment. And farmland rate of $2.16 per acre. Garbage collection and processing residential would be $180 per dwelling unit up to a maximum of four dwelling units per building. And in excess of four dwelling units is deemed commercial and at the owner's expense. Retail and other commercial type operators are deemed commercial and at their own expense. We have pollution control charges, and these have increased. Oh, I thought you said... So pollution control charges are the sewer rates that we pay within the town. So for five inch, 5/8 inch water services, the quarterly rate will be $31.66 per quarter. For 3/4 inch water services, the sewer charge will be $47.50 per quarter. For one inch, it will be $79.16 per quarter. For 1 1/2 inch, $158.32 per quarter. For two inch lines, $2.53, $253.31 per quarter. For three inch, it will be $506.61 per quarter. For four inch, $791.58 per quarter. Six inch will be $1,583.17 per quarter. And for eight inch, $2,849.70 per quarter. Those are the base rates. The affluent rate, which is based on the consumption of water, will be $3.12 per 1,000 imperial gallons. The interest rate that will be charged by the town of Yarmouth will be 14% per annum and will be charged on delinquent accounts. Depreciation, Council approves a transfer to the capital fund, an amount equal to the depreciation expense included in the 2015-16 budget of $1,825,479. Now that is a new clause this year, and it relates to the fact that we fund our depreciation. And because of the way the accounting is done, we need this motion to transfer that into the capital fund. And finally, that the CAO will implement the inherent recommendations, administer and control the operating budget, and report to Council as appropriate.
Counselor Langel?
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to make that motion, please, to get it on the books, and I had a quick question for the CAO, if there's a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded?
Thank you, your worship. Mr. Guxu, just for those who are watching, what would the impact be to the average residential homeowner and commercial homeowner? Where are we, with that rates? Are we looking up, down? I know the answer, but I think for the benefit of those watching, because there was a lot of numbers there.
Sure, absolutely. So there will be no increase, we expect, on average, to residential or commercial. The only change is, sorry, in the tax rate, we've seen the tax rates for residential and commercial come down. They have come down in an amount equal to what we expect the increase in the sewer charges to be. And so what we're trying to do is make the sewer operation self-sustaining based on the fees that we charge. A few years ago, we were subsidizing the sewer operation to the tune of $1 million out of general tax revenue, and still charging a sewer rate, which probably gave people the understanding that they were paying for sewer fully through that rate. In a couple of years' time, that will actually be the case, that our sewer charges will fully cover the cost of operations, and that taxation will be backed out of our rates. And our rates have been coming down the last couple of years. The one place where the costs are increasing is on the solid waste, or on the, what we call, I'll find it here, the garbage collection and processing. That is $180 per dwelling unit this year, and I believe that's $25 more than it was in the past. And that is simply on the same principle as that the charge that we put out there per dwelling unit is intended to cover the full cost of providing that service. And over the last couple of years, that it's slipped a little bit, so we're making the adjustment this year. And so for $25 or about 50 cents a week, we're now going to be able to fully cover the cost of those services.
And thank you, your worship. Maybe we could get the CAO to explain funding depreciation, please.
So in, I think, what I hope are the simplest terms, our depreciation is a calculation we do of our, what we call our tangible capital assets. And that is our buildings and our vehicles, equipment, our plants, and so on, our tangible capital assets. So every year, a building such as this, we use up a year of its useful life. A building like this, we might have thought would last maybe 40 years useful life. So every year, we expense 1/40 of the original cost of constructing this building. We do that for all of our tangible capital assets, and it adds up to a little over $1.8 million per year. So what we do when we say we fund our depreciation is that in our general tax rates, we collect enough money to replace that $1.8 million every year. So as we're using up the useful life of our tangible capital assets, our taxpayers are paying for it, and we are reinvesting it back into our capital assets. So when we do things like the Hawthorne Street rebuild, or we did Pleasant Street a few years ago, we did Green Street, when we do projects like that, the reason we can afford to do them is because we are paying our way on our infrastructure through our depreciation, and that gives us money to put back into the infrastructure. We are the only municipality in Nova Scotia that does that. We've been doing it for 10 years, and I'm not sure that there's another municipality in Canada that can say that.
That's right. That's right. Okay?
Call for a question.
Questions being called. All those in favor of the budget as described by the CAO?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Unanimously? Certainly.
I'd like to just give a public shout out to our Director of Finance, Jerry Varon. Jerry did 98% of the work on the budget, and through all those meetings with Committee of the Whole, he did the work. And so it's, I feel a little inappropriate really presenting the budget that he did so much work on, so shout out to Jerry for great work on that.
Good. Okay, Council Meetings Bylaw, second reading. No, that's okay. You just dealt with $17 million. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, your worship. So the Council Means Bylaw, second reading. What would be appropriate this time would be if there was anybody in the audience who wished to speak, because this essentially is a public hearing part, and then you would make either a motion to approve second reading, or to send it back for revision, or to defer it to another time. But in essence, what we've done here with the Council Meetings Bylaws, we had a Council Agenda Policy as a separate document, and we had the Council Means Bylaw. And so the Bylaw and Policy Review Committee went through the two documents and merged them into one, and it passed first reading at the last Council meeting. So it would be appropriate, if anybody wished to speak from the public, to do so now and then consider a motion for second reading.
Good. Does anyone from the public wish to speak first? Okay, I'll provide you another opportunity. Deputy Mayor?
Your worship, I just have a question. In reading this over, I see the words, or the two words, Town Clerk. And I wondered, I'm not sure where they are, Jeff, in the nine pages here in front of us, but is Town Clerk still appropriate? Thank you.
Sorry, CAO?
The short answer is yes, it's still appropriate. There are, under the Municipal Government Act, there are rules and responsibilities for the Town Clerk and the Town Treasurer and the CAO. And I wear all three of those titles and hats at different times, I guess, under the Act. So it is still an appropriate term.
Good. I'm going to ask the second time, would anyone like to speak from the public? Anyone like to speak? No? Okay, so I am looking for a motion to approve second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Question?
Questions being called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Building bylaw, second reading, same thing. Go ahead, CAO.
This actually has come from staff, the rewrite on this came from staff. We have a new building inspector in the last year, and she reviewed the bylaws, suggested basically some housekeeping changes to it. I don't believe there's anything more substantive than that, and so this is again, second reading. So if anybody from the public wished to speak to it, this would be the appropriate time, and then a motion either to approve, refer, or to defer from Council.
Good. Would anyone from the public like to speak to the building bylaw? Anyone from the public? Third time, anyone out there want to speak to this one? No? Counselor Dawes, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. I would like to make the motion to accept and approve the building bylaw as presented by our, by staff.
Okay.
Thank you.
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
Questions?
Questions being called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Fire prevention bylaw, second reading. Go ahead, CAO.
Thank you, your worship. So the fire prevention bylaw amendments were prepared by the fire inspector in consultation with the chief, and addresses, first of all, the color of private hydrants, and secondly, makes explicit the authority of the fire inspector on rental units. And under that authority, if passed, the fire safety inspection policy, which isn't on the agenda tonight, but will come forward, and you've seen it before, would allow for the inspection of rental units. And our intention, as we've talked about before, is to inspect more units, more rental units, and to bring down the minimum number of rental units before they become eligible for inspection over time.
Good. Anyone in the public want to speak to this right now? Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, your worship. If the chief doesn't mind, if he could come up and explain the different color of fire hydrants versus the ones that we have in the town of Yarmouth, different colored ones, if you could give us that information.
We appreciate it.
Yeah, there's private fire hydrants, and then there's municipal fire hydrants. Municipal fire hydrants go by NFPA. Anything that doesn't, isn't covered in the town has to be painted red, and they're private fire hydrants. And we don't, we don't maintenance them. It doesn't fall under me, it falls under Public Works, but we don't maintenance them unless they paid to be maintenance. For our town, you've got four main hydrants. You've got a red one, which is below 500. Then you've got from 500 to 1,000, which is orange. From 1,000 to 1,500 is green, and over 1,500 is blue. So basically, that's it.
Do we have many private ones in the town of Yarmouth?
We have, I don't know the exact numbers, but we do have red ones here and there, right? And also, you could have a higher colored one or a higher class one, if you will, that may have an old main to it, and if the main breaks, obviously, it's not going to be the same color as it was before and things.
Those would be businesses?
Those would be, higher volume are usually in the more consumption, like if you have a business area or industrial area, you'll have higher volume. That's normally the way the system's put together, right?
Yeah, go ahead, CAO.
Yeah, I just want to make clear a differentiation there that I'm not sure was clear. So a privately owned hydrant, and there are some on commercial properties, what this bylaw is saying is they must be painted red entirely. The hydrant colors that the chief went through, those are the caps that you see on the town owned hydrants, and they, the color indicates the availability of water, how much water's available, which I think is helpful to the fire department when they're setting up to fight a fire. They can tell by looking, you know, is this a hydrant that's going to give us a high supply of water versus maybe not so high. And your comment about the red capped ones, I think those tend to be in older, smaller mains and parts of town that don't have the newer, bigger infrastructure.
Good. Thank you, Chief. Okay, I'll ask again if anyone in the public wishes to speak to this. Third and final time, anyone like to speak to this? Okay, I am looking for a motion, either way.
So moved.
Nope.[1376.38][1376.38](Laughter) Whatever, I need to know what the motion is. If it's a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Then, okay. As it is, Counselor Dawes, did you want to second that?
I will second that.
Okay, moved and seconded, discussion?
Questions?
Questions being called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. You realize anytime anyone clears their throat, I'm thinking there's a light on that I'm missing. So, no, it's okay. Okay, Minimum Housing Standards bylaw, second reading. Go ahead, CAO.
Thank you, your worship. So the Minimum Housing Standards bylaw had not been reviewed in its entirety for some time. The town staff, the building inspector, and the Director of Plane Development reviewed the bylaw and have suggested some housekeeping amendments here, and I think the most substantive change is I believe that we no longer, under this bylaw proposal, would be dealing with vermin. Okay, that we would no longer be responsible for vermin, and it's questionable whether we have that authority under the Municipal Government Act. One of the reasons that...
What do you mean, responsible?
Well, Minimum Housing Standards, what, where this comes in is if we get a complaint, and usually these are complaint driven, somebody says, "I have some sort of vermin in my place." What this says is that you can't provide housing that doesn't meet a certain standard on these particular areas. So as I said, it's questionable whether we have the authority to impose a bylaw with regard to vermin under the Municipal Government Act. And so what they looked at is where's our clear authority under the Act. This has been reviewed by Mr. Barrow as well, I should say. And what they're presenting back to you is what I think they believe is a reasonable bylaw, an enforceable bylaw, and one that they clearly have the authority to deal with. So again, the second reading, so it would be a chance for the public.
Would someone in the public like to speak to this? This is the Minimum Housing bylaw. Anyone out there want to speak to this? Third time, would anyone in the public like to speak to this one? No? Okay, hearing none, I am looking for a motion. Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. I would gladly make the motion to accept the Minimum Housing Standards bylaw as presented by staff here on the agenda.
So moved?
It was, it's well done.
Seconded by Counselor Dennis. Counselor Langel?
Yeah, I was just considering this on the Minimum Housing's bylaw, and I'm just wondering a question for the CAO. The bylaw as it is coming in, what effect will it have, generally speaking, on properties that are now existing? Is there any grandfathering built into this, or will this be coming in? So there's none, good. Second question is, and this is my old bugaboo, we have passed regulations and bylaws in the past that are still sitting on a minister's desk. Have we got any indication when those bylaws and those regulations are going to be pulled off the minister's desk and may be signed? Because some of them have been on the minister's desk for about four or five years now. And that's something that I think would be nice before our mandate runs out, that we get at least one of these or two of these signed.
Well, let me say this, that there was another conversation last week, so that we should see something hopefully very soon, very soon. The Lloyding one in particular, I said we'd love to have that. We'd love to have it before the Torresland, and that's in a couple of weeks, so it should be coming soon. Go ahead, CAO.
Yeah, no, I can tell you in the administration level that we had a contact from the department this week, asking if we were still interested in having these regulations, these bylaws registered under the regulations. And we actually said yes, all except for the Helmet bylaw, which we've repealed. So that, all except for one. So the good news is that there's been a contact, at least it's on somebody's radar there, and hopefully, you know, as you say, before the term is done, we'll get that bit done.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. Just a supplementary, so do these, help me with process here, so the minister can sign up, but do they have to go to the legislature? Or are we going to be incumbent on the fall meeting session of the legislature? Mayor indicated, I'm wondering, or can the minister just sign them off as regulations?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that, Counselor Langel. I don't know the answer. I assume because it's regulation, it doesn't have to go back, but I can look at that if you like.
Good. Okay, so anything further? Did we pass the Minimum Housing?
No.
Okay, so questions being called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Corporate identity and branding policy? CAO?
Your worship, this was brought forward to Committee of the Whole, I believe, a month and a half, two months ago, and we missed it on last month's Council Agenda for approval, so it was just a bit of housekeeper bringing that forward at this point. But we have, I can say we have in fact been in the process of implementing it, and so we hope you'll approve it.
Good.
So... Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion?
Questions.
Questions being called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. We are down to new business, and we're at COMFIT support. CAO?
Thank you. Sorry, I don't have documentation for you on this, but it is a, the COMFIT program is the, what, is the short form of Community Feeding Tariff. So what that is, is the Department of Energy set up a few years ago, a program whereby municipalities, educational institutions, public sector entities could in fact undertake green energy projects and sell the energy they create to Nova Scotia Power at a very favorable rate. That program just ended recently, and we do have an active approve, approval under that program for two wind turbines, which were in the process of going through the installation process. So there's public participation, so on, so we're doing that. which were in the process of, of going through the, the installation process. So, there's public participation, so on, so we're doing that. But the program has come to an end. It was, I think, fairly successful. And the province, we're told, is considering whether another program is, is worthwhile. And from, from my perspective and, and the Green Energy Committee's perspective, a, a second round to the comfit program would be desirable because it gives, it gives that public sector an opportunity to set up demonstration projects or, or set leadership in place in terms of some green energy projects, just as an example. And we've talked about wind turbines in Yarmouth County. In, in Digby County, I know there's a methane generator that, that was purchased by municipality. It's, it's set up in a cooperative, cooperative arrangement with the mink industry, so basically using mink waste to generate methane to burn and create electricity. So, there are all kinds of, of projects like that across the province that would not happen. We would not get into that business if it weren't for the comfit program. And I think the comfit program is, is an appropriate way for government to, to work with quasi-government agencies to set leadership on green energy across the province. There is also always programs for the, for the private sector to, to do projects such as wind farms or solar projects or what have you. But in the absence of a comfit program, it probably is not the business that municipalities and universities and so on should be into. But with that program, it is a unique opportunity. And, and we've seen, like in the municipality of Clare, at the university, there are wind turbines there that are, that are generating electricity. And, you know, I guess setting an example in the community. So, what I would ask, of course, I'd answer any questions I can, but asking for a general letter of support to the, to the Minister of Energy to, to do a phase two on the comfit program.
I just had a question to the CAO and probably would definitely move the motion, but was a little bit concerned last week when I read a well-known, excellent publication, The Vanguard. And there was an article from a fellow schoolmate of mine, Wade Nickerson. He wrote a, quite a lengthy letter, and I have a high respect for Wade, and he not normally doesn't author letters. And there were some interesting statements in that. Is there a possibility that we could get? I don't want to get into a debate in the media on it, of course. I don't think it's our place to respond. But there seems to be some conflicting numbers that Mr. Nickerson brought up. Is there a way that maybe we could find out if who's telling who what? Because the numbers that Mr. Nickerson raises on the amount of output, the numbers he was raising on noise and factors like that are a little bit different than what we've, what he's suggesting is maybe not what we've been told. I'm very supportive of the project, don't get me wrong, but I wanted to make sure the information was right. And I, I again have high respect for Mr. Nickerson, and he normally does not write, you know, publications. And when he does write, he takes great pride in accuracy, and I'm, I'm kind of curious as to a response on that.
So, can we, can we just bring that to the, to the committee? And, yeah.
So, I haven't, I confess, I haven't met, read Mr. Nickerson's letter, but I will. And I'll get some information from, from our consultant, who is working with the turbine manufacturer and is very experienced in the industry. And I'll ask him to, to review it and provide a response to council so that, so that you have, you know, that. I get, what I would say is that perspective, unless there's a different person you'd like me to go to, to seek clarification.
Just to help me out too on this one, so going into phase two means what?
So, the province, Department of Energy approved a rate, and I believe it was about 49 cents per kilowatt hour, to buy energy from comfit, comfit programs. And I believe if you buy electricity as a consumer from Nova Scotia Power, I think you pay something like 19 cents per kilowatt hour. So, it's obviously a, a very beneficial rate that's paid, and I think that's with, with a purpose. And that is to try and create those examples in the public sector across the province. So, the program was open for, for a limited number of years and for applications, and just recently, it, it closed. So, they're not receiving any further applications. So, what I'm asking is, is that we, we ask the Minister of Energy to consider a phase two, which would create maybe in a year or so, another opportunity for new projects to come forward to receive maybe a new rate, maybe not that rate, but a rate that is more beneficial than, say, the 19 cents, or whatever a, a private sector developer would do. That's a decision the Minister of Energy, I would expect, would make on the balance of, of, is it needed? What would be the benefits of, of more community-based, not-for-profit, you know, public sector projects? Would it create more awareness or acceptance? Maybe that's not needed like it was five years ago. But if it is needed, it's certainly a great opportunity for the public sector to get involved, and, and we will have net revenues from, from our project, and we could do more like it if there was another comfit.
Your worship, I would like to make that motion that we, that the town of Yarmouth supports the recommendation of staff that we write to the Minister of Energy requesting, suggesting a phase two of the comfit project. And I have a secondary question, if somebody seconds to get on for it. The other question I had, and I apologize to CAO, and I was kind of hoping it would be part of the report. I, I did not attend the two public meetings. Unfortunately, I was out of town both, both times on justice business. How did the public meetings go? I'm curious if anybody went, because I, I haven't seen much on that.
Yeah, I, I attended the afternoon session, and it was, it was actually pretty good. There were questions asked and answers given. There was no presentation as such. There were poster boards and information there. And, and so, it didn't go, didn't go too badly. I understand, secondhand, that the evening session drew more people that were, that were not in favor of, of wind energy projects, I think, generally. And maybe specifically that one for various reasons. And I believe there was a, a third session, which was done for people who had specifically, for whatever reason, weren't able to attend either of those. And again, I don't, I don't know that that went especially well. I think, and this is one of the reasons why maybe a comfit program is still needed, is that I think there's a, there's a lot of misinformation. Let me put, let me, let me back up from that word a little bit and say, a lot of concern about wind energy and different perspectives about, about the pros and cons. And what a comfit program does for communities is allows where there is acceptance and where there is a will to get some community benefit and to put a demonstration project out there. So, where this one goes from here, you know, that, that is yet to be determined. And I guess I, I could end by saying that if you would like to have a, a brief from Neil McKenzie. Neil chaired those community sessions. I'm sure he'd be willing to provide you with a brief summary of, of what went on there.
Probably do that at committee of the whole. Airport, right, I came from that side first time. Airport intermunicipal, oh, did we vote on that? No, we didn't. Okay, question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Airport intermunicipal agreement for approval. CAO? Oh, councillor, did you have your lights on?
Mine, but I'll, I'll wait, I'll wait, your worship, to see what Jeff has to say. And I, I sit on the airport commission, so I just want to see what he has to say. And I'll ask the question, and then he can throw it in his answer. I read some of the report. I didn't read it all. Are you comfortable with the report as it's, as it's presented? Do you have any concerns? Is there anything that with this council or any of the other councils? We can only speak for ourselves. Should be worried about it. It is up, I think, where, this month or September? Or is it already up now? It's already gone now? Okay, so I'll, I'll just wait to see what you have to say. Great.
Okay, CAO?
So, we had, and we have an intermunicipal corporation based on an intermunicipal agreement that expired March 31st. And we, we agreed to renegotiate, to create a new agreement. It was clear. Although there were, there were concerns about the airport and the funding that goes into it. It was agreed that we would, we would work towards an agreement to continue the partnership. So, the three municipalities of Yarmouth County, there is, there is an agreement there. And some will recall that we had a meeting in Hebron to work out some of the last details that we felt as CAOs needed, needed a conversation between the elected officials of the, of the three units to arrive at ultimately what, what the right percentages for funding and so on were within the agreement. That was a great meeting, I thought. I thought there was a lot of sharing of, of perspectives. Not everyone necessarily agreed on everything, but you know what? When we can get together with our municipal neighbors and we can laugh, and we can respect one another, and we can work on an issue that we, we don't agree on, and ultimately reach a, reach a consensus, I think that's, that's a sign of a very healthy intermunicipal relationship. So, the new agreement is a four-year agreement, and it is so for, with, with intent. Four years brings us to the same point in the next council's mandate to make a decision about the future. It is not a 10-year agreement, and that is, that is intentional because we, we understand that the, we understand that the, the airport is, is almost at a crossroads. And we, it is a, it is a huge asset to our community, to our region, to the province, but it is underutilized. It is, and it is misunderstood in some regards. It is viewed as, as an economic asset, but it is a social and cultural asset. Social in the sense that the life flights, the 20-some life flights every year that come in and use that airport have a value that you can't put a number on. When you think about the lives that may be saved in our community, we don't know how many would be saved without it. But do we want to take the chance that without the lifeflight, the fixed-wing aircraft being able to land here, that, that somebody that we know wouldn't make it because that airport wasn't open? It is also important to supporting our, our largest industry, which is the fishing industry, with the, the search and rescue and so on, that is able to access the, the, the resources of fueling, landing, whatever at the airport. So, it's, it's an important asset, but the infrastructure's not getting any younger, and we cannot afford on our own to maintain that infrastructure. And so, with the four-year agreement, it is understood that we have to find an appropriate partnership with other levels of government to reinvest in the infrastructure at that airport, or it will not continue to exist for the long term. And that would be a shame for, for the community and for the province. So, that is, that is a, a task, and I can't, I can't say strongly enough how important and how, how important that, that aspect of it is. So, a four-year agreement, the percentages have changed a little since the last one, but not a lot. And we have put a cap on the funding, which is also a message to the, to the airport that there is not a, it's not unlimited. We have so much money that we can invest in this, and so we're, we have to live within our means. And that investment is not enough to replace infrastructure. So, yes, to answer your question in short, I, I think it's a, a good agreement, and I think it's an appropriate agreement at this time.
And, and listening to that, I move that we enter into the agreement, accept the terms of the agreement as presented tonight by the CEO, and that's presented to us.
Moved and seconded. Councillor Dawes?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Request for a decision, ferry terminal kiosk? Sorry, councillor.
I think, I think we should make a motion. I'll make a motion. We send this to the Yarmouth Area Industrial Commission since we are all partners. Us making a unilateral decision on putting something on the ferry terminal property with two other partners, I don't think that's a good precedent. And they have, we have a meeting on Tuesday night, I believe?
It is very soon, yes.
Is that appropriate, CAO, I believe?
I think it is.
Yeah, I think that would be, that'd be appropriate and considerate, and, you know, we can, we can talk about it there. And I think that's, that's probably perfectly appropriate.
Good. Okay, councillor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. I agree. I agree with my, my fellow councillors, and at the same time, perhaps the wording on the ferry terminal kiosk operational requirements that was submitted, the very first line, it does state kiosk operation, kiosk operational for the 2015 Nova Star sailing season with no rental fee yet. Continually, they identify themselves as the renter. So, perhaps, perhaps councillor Winnie would like to add that to his motion? That that be looked at before, that be rectified or, or looked at before it goes? Go ahead.
I think we can deal with that at the industrial commission, I think.
That's fine.
You're going to be there too?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, yeah. I think myself, councillor McCausick, deputy mayor, the mayor, are on there, so we'll. We'll bring those concerns to.
I am too, don't forget.
Yeah, yourself, we'll bring those concerns to the industrial commission.
Good, thank you.
Yes.
And just, just further to what councillor Dawes commented, there are some items in that that may spark some interest at the, I'm not on that industrial commission, but things, for example, painting it in town brand colors, things like that. That's something, I mean, that assumes an identity with us, whereas we do have two other partners. So, I think some caution may be there as well.
Question?
Yep, okay. Question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Request to council regalco traffic engineering report. CAO?
Thank you, your worship. So, this is a response to some questions that I think came up at a committee of the whole meeting about the recommendations of the Galco study, and were specifically pointed out. So, the memo, just sort of in point form, tries to address how those, each, each of those recommendations was addressed. I can go through it, or if there are any questions, I can try and answer the questions.
We can go with questions. Did you ever, go ahead.
Well, I read the, of course, this has been, we've discussed this already, I believe, at committee of the whole. And again, there was quite a bit of interest as a result of what's happening there. In conversation with various truckers recently, the horse fountain itself is really not an issue in Milton, because it actually can stay pretty well where it is and probably should stay because it's not a, an impediment to the trucks moving. The issue seems to be the median. And this mystery median that appeared, and I use the word mystery because I can't find anything in the study where it says that we should build a median. However, the only thing I did notice was on page nine, and I did send council an email on it dated April 14th, and a quote from page nine, "The new median on Vancouver Street offers more protection to the horse monument than previously existed." And this is the part that really concerned me. And the consultant is saying, "However, its presence in a busy intersection can never be considered beneficial to either vehicular, pedestrian movements, or traffic safety." And that, that really stuck out with me, and I don't know, I, I'd like to see us take that median out of there. Because to be perfectly honest, and talking to some of the truckers, that's the main problem they're having, is getting around there to move that median out. We're having, and maybe other, I know at least a couple of people around this table have echoed my comments. I'm seeing people going up the wrong way to beat the median. And I'm wondering if, and I, and I, I just, we, I didn't get an answer the time I brought it up with Mr. Ernst or Traffic Authority, that why was it put there? And in talking to residents in the Milton area, none of them really want it. Communities in Bloom, our committee, see it as a garbage collector, because every bit of litter that possibly blows through Milton ends up in that, in that median, and it's, it's an issue. So, I'm wondering if CAO would comment on that. I, I, is it possible that we can take that puppy out of there?
Did you want to, do you want to answer that, or do you want councillor Dawes to?
No, no.
Keep your light on, though. Okay, go ahead, CAO.
Yep, the median was introduced between the two studies, and it was not to protect the horse. It was to, to help to regulate the flow of traffic through that awkward intersection. And it was to, to prevent people coming through the intersection and taking a left onto Water Street, or people coming up Water Street and taking a left up Forest. Those were the two, and sorry, the third movement was coming down Vancouver Street, thank you, and taking a left into the Irving. So, those three maneuvers, very close to the intersection, creating what we call the five corners, were undesirable. Up until the point that the median was there, there were signs that told people not to make those. the median was there, there were signs that told people not to make those moves. And of course, excuse me, the signs had no, no serious impact on, on people's habits that had generated over, over many years. And so, between the, the previous Traffic Authority and Mr. Ernst, who was then the Traffic Authority, and the Town Engineer, a decision was made to, to introduce that bit of infrastructure to solve those, those three movements that created problems in the intersection. It, it itself probably does create a, an irritation to people who are used to making those three maneuvers and can no longer make them. I think we heard that ever since it was introduced, that some people who used to go up Water Street and take the, take the left up Vancouver, missed that. However, from the traffic control side, I think the Traffic Authority would say, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, but the, the slight irritation and slight inconvenience that that causes is outweighed by the, by the functioning of the intersection as a result of, of the presence of the median. Does it collect garbage? Yeah, sometimes it collects garbage. Does it create a problem or, or an issue for trucks? I guess I've watched a truck ride its wheels up on the curb there and to the degree that that's a problem, I guess it creates a problem. But I, I guess to your question, can it be removed? As the Counselor, to, to your left indicated, anything can, anything can be done. The, the question is, is what, what are the cost benefits of, of doing that? And it was not a decision that was taken lightly. It didn't come from, from Galco. And it is not a decision that hasn't been without criticism from day one, but from a traffic management perspective, given the configuration of that intersection, it's, it's, I think Dave still believes that, that it is the best thing for overall.
Thank you. Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, Your Worship. The main issue, the main issue, as Counselor, Counselor Dennis, Dennis will, will, will attest, that the truck drivers have, when they drive along Water Street, is making that right-hand turn from Water Street onto Main via Vancouver. That is where they're having the most difficulty. And I think there, we would, at least for this year, or, or at least for this year and next year, because this year, there's no money for that, for anything, next year, because our budget has already been, been allocated. But if we could look into what it would cost, what all would be involved, to just give those truck drivers an extra 10 feet into the green space there by Marco's, right in the corner, that would alleviate a lot of their problems and, and some of ours. And if we could, I don't know, do you need a motion to, to refer that to the next, next year's capital budget to see where that fits, how much it would cost? If you want it, I will make it. It's all, as you said, as you said before, it is, it's all a question of cost, affordability. And if we've got lots of money, then we can do all our, all our, we could do everything all at the same time.
So, is the question to, what would the motion be? To, to direct staff?
To direct staff.
To look into it or to refer to budget? We gotta look at it first?
Yeah.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate. Obviously, our, like I said, our capital budget is set this year, so...
Yes.
If you'd like staff to, to look at options, to, you know, reasonably inexpensive options to reconfigure, to deal with that, if that's the issue, if it's the right turn for trucks from Water to, to Main Street on Vancouver, we can task Mr. Ernst and his, and his people with coming up with options, and maybe it's 10 feet, maybe it's, maybe it's less, from that green space to create the, the more smooth movement for trucks.
Did you just dictate the entire motion?
To, to direct staff, to look into the options at the five corners intersection for trucks to turn right?
Turn right from Water onto, onto Vancouver. That makes it very clear what the task is and...
Yes. Thank you very much.
Make that motion?
Thank you very much, yes. Uh-huh. And referring it to next year's capital budget, that could wait after or, or would you like that added?
Till we see what it is.
Until then. Thank you.
Okay. So, there's your motion. Can I have a second?
Someone would second it?
Did you second it? Sorry, I didn't hear you. Okay. Moved and seconded. Discussion? Did you...
Yeah, I wanted, yeah, yeah, yeah. Right. Well, there's, there, there is a problem there. It's no secret. Anybody that wants to take a left-hand turn and take a right-hand turn, another left on Main Street to go up towards Hebron and that, if you hit the traffic right, and I've hit it right all the time, you, you can't, you, you're halfway, you come out, you're blocking traffic from coming down Vancouver Street to go onto Main Street, or even Water Street. And that's happened a lot of times. Not only to me, but probably a lot of other people. Once you, there's two, if there's two vehicles there waiting to take a left-hand turn, you block the whole thing off. You ain't going no wheres. And that medium plays havoc to that. And, and it's, it's gonna continue to do that. I, it, it's, it's staged very clearly in that report. I guess if you want to believe the report, you believe it. If you don't want to believe it and you gotta, the, the Traffic Authority's got another answer for it because he likes his answer, that's fine. That's fine. But I won't be supporting the motion. I think that what should be is take the medium either partially out, partially out, but put the signs back up where they were before, put it at the one, one end by the horse there, that you can't turn to go on to a cross, you can't go cross-traffic, or you can't make a, a left-hand turn, a right-hand turn up in, up on Vancouver Street, right or left, whatever it is. I mean, it's pretty simple. You ain't be gonna take it all out, but you should take some of it out to allow the trucks to be able to turn. If you're looking at taking some of that sidewalk and moving the sidewalk over, I think you better, you better do, do both options. You better, I would think, you look at both options. Take some of it out so the trucks can make that curve and other traffic, it won't appease the flow of traffic coming off Water Street to go on to, go up the Hebron Way, because you can only get two, only fit two cars there, period. You can't put anymore. So, I say that there is a problem and I'll go with what the report says, that, you know, when they made the report, there wasn't a median there, so.
Counselor Landrell?
Thank you, Your Worship. Hearing what Counselor McIsaac was commenting, there's a couple of comments there. Number, number one, I think, as the CAO pointed out, the median appeared between the two studies. There were two studies involved and that's where the median kinda crept in between the two. The one I'm quoting from was the last study. That was the one after the median was introduced. And that, that bothered me because this is from a traffic consulting company that we hired to look at it. Now, I don't know whether we have to bring Galco back or not. It may, I don't even know if they even exist. The other problem we have, and I do hope, I do know that our Traffic Authority, I don't, I can pretty well read, has no interest in taking the median out. That was pretty apparent in discussions here. So, it's gonna be a, my question is even if it is a Traffic Authority function to decide medians or not, but that's another issue. However, I do feel that we have to look at the median and I do hope that in this motion that Counselor Dawes so excellently crafted...
You know?
You like that, did you?
I love it.
It was good. Anyway, the Counselor Dawes crafted, I, I will hope that the intent is that the median will become a factor in that review, that we're not only gonna be looking at that little corner, that we are gonna seriously look at the median. The other concern that I have, too, is recently, we've added a hunk of concrete on the end of the bridge. So, as you turn right onto Vancouver, from Vancouver onto Water, we have a hunk of concrete stuck there. And I'm not sure the reason for the hunk, and I did bring that up to the Traffic Authority at a recent meeting here, and he couldn't answer me or didn't answer me on it. The issue there is, is just recently today, I was coming back from the hospital and coming down and to take a turn on Water Street, it is blocking the view. If you're a low car, you really do not have a good view plane onto Vancouver Street. And I'll be honest, I just ran into a car, because I tended to take the turn a little wide and there's like a car there that, whoa, where did that come from? And that's that block of, so I mean, on one hand, we're like mega concerned and safe and really worried about that median gotta stay for traffic, yet we put a big hunk of concrete on the end of a bridge to take away the view plane. So, I'm kind of confused. Yeah, we're in the minority there. Yeah, of course, if, if you're short, if you're short in a car, you got an issue. Yeah, I hear ya. So, I, I hope that hunk of concrete will be part of that study, too, that we will look at the hunk and we'll look at the median as part of that. And, and I, I welcome that report coming in.
Counselor Dennis?
I really wanna see this study done, because I don't wanna see us rushing into making a decision on this, because at one time, I'm sure our council went through the same thing before they put the median in, and now we're discussing taking it out. And I don't wanna see us wasting tax dollars on putting it in, taking it out, and then having a problem again. So, I really want a good study done on this before we make any decision.
Right.
Good. Counselor Dawes?
Did you want it? No. All right. Thank you, Your Worship. Counselor McIsaac, I believe, brought something up that, that triggered. I brought this up, I think, at the last committee of the whole. Mr. Gushu will, will recall, I'm sure, where our Town Engineer, Mr. Ernst, said that he could do a, one of those truck turn, access turn models on his computer to see what, just how, how much of, of, how much, let's say 10, or if it may, it, it may, may require 12 feet to be taken off that corner. And I wasn't sure if a motion was going to be required for him to do that at the time. That wasn't, that wasn't really, that wasn't straightened out, wasn't settled. So, I assume he is going to, I know, you should never assume, but he will be doing that model on his computer and that will tell us exactly how much he needs to take off, how much. I mean, 10 feet is a lot of space. That's a lot of space. And that will also help the passenger vehicles make that turn as well. And yeah, we can look at anything in the future, but right now, it's, it's all dollars and cents. Let's get the most important thing done right now and then we can always, we can always look, look, look ahead into the future and look at all other studies and, and costs. Thank you.
So, so there's a motion on the floor. So, I live on Chestnut Street and every single day, I do the Vancouver turn and two cars fit. Two cars fit and not once has that really bothered me. Because it hasn't bothered me because I think, well, you gotta wait. And, and I'm in the city often and to get from one block to the other takes half an hour. So, I'm willing to wait the 30 seconds extra that it takes to get into that lane to get up to my place, which is always the left-hand lane from Water Street. I was also with the RCMP when the, when the Traffic Authority, he was, he was my boss. He was in, he was in the town detachment then. And I remember when the median went in, and I also remember that it changed everything, because it used to be, this is just my view on, on what it was, it was like a tangled mess down there. Everybody's bumping into everybody. The horns are honking. The, I mean, it was, it was nothing short of crazy. And when the median went in, and actually, I remember he put the, the left hand, no left-hand turns off of, off of Water Street signs up. Well, I, I don't know, maybe people can't read signs, but they certainly didn't follow that. So, the option was, as I understood it, the option was the median. And, and from my perspective, and I, and I asked Joe about this, actually, before I, before I came, I said, "Do you remember when that went in?" And he remembered as well. And it just, everything just started to flow. And the fact that, now, you probably have to do that, too, because where you live, like you come down, I don't know what your thoughts are, but, but you're in the same position. You have to turn, get in that left lane. But it's just, it just made it much easier. So, the only problem I see is that right turn for the trucks and they don't have enough space. So, I agree that we look at that. I also agree, we can look at, we have to look at the part of the median in the meantime. But, but Counselor Dennis, you're right. Like, we can't be putting it in and taking it out. And the phone calls from people that I got that had a fear that we were gonna take the horse out, oh my goodness. So, you know, I, I guess studies are done and, and I don't think that the population of Yarmouth has grown so much that anything should change, but, but that's, it is what it is. So, your light's been flashing?
Yep.
Go ahead, Counselor, or CAO?
(laughing)
Don't wish that on you, right?
Thank you.
Slice a couple zeros off that paycheck.
Oh, my. What was I gonna say?
I don't know. You wanna switch seats at any time?
So, so the, the motion is about, is about coming back with options, looking at the, the right turn for, for trucks. Obviously, all aspects of the intersection will be considered, including the median, obviously modeling for, for turning radiuses, that kinda thing. So, we don't have to tell us how to do it. We'll look at all the options. But the concrete, the other, the other wrinkle that was introduced in this discussion was that concrete at the end of the, the bridge. I don't think that's, that's real new. That was, I don't think it's been put in since my time. But anyway, it's there and I know exactly what you're talking about as far as the sightlines. Not so much in my van, but in my car. And I suspect it's there to protect pedestrians from falling into the gorge, but we'll look at, at what options there might be there for that as well.
Good. Okay. So, the motion's on the table. Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary?
I, I said aye. You guys have the median.
Yeah, we're gonna add, everything will be looked at. Yeah. So, good. Motion carried. Marketing and Promotions Levy Advisory Committee Room Levy Expansion. CAO, do you know what you, when that is? Because I don't know if I have anything in front of me.
Yes. So, council had asked for the Marketing and Promotions Levy Advisory Committee to look at options for expanding the levy. And, you know, I know the group, I did participate in a couple of their meetings where there were, there was discussion, but no ultimate decision on, on what they would recommend to council. I was not at the meeting where they made their ultimate recommendation, but we did, council was looking for it in a timely manner and so they did make, come, bring themselves to some consensus. And the consensus was, as you can see in the memo, is they don't believe that, that there should be any change at this time, but that perhaps it should be reviewed again in one year.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Your Worship. A little disappointed in that, because again, we only have a small number of, shall we say hotels, motels in the area that are supporting the room levy, whereas we have a number of other institutions, shall we say, or facilities that also have rooms that benefit a lot from what the room levy's doing, is not there. But that's water under the bridge. But I, I, I do, I am glad that they're gonna be reconsidering. I would like to find out eventually the rationale they use for not changing it. I think that would be something that'd be interesting, not to drag this out tonight, but I, I would ask the CAO maybe if a request could be made to Mr. Allright, who I guess is the administrative supporter, whoever the Grand Pruba is. And I, I'd like to have an explanation as to the rationale behind this decision. Just so that we would know, because it was brought to this council or council asked for it, but basically. So, I'm gonna make a motion that we request an explanation or an explanation of the rationale for the decision to leave the room levy in place. That could be maybe sent to us at some date.
Second. Moved and seconded. It just says here, oh, okay. It says, "Won't provide a substantial benefit."
Says not.
Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, Your Worship. Did you just read that from the correspondence that we received earlier from?
I, I just have the, I just have this, yes.
Okay. All right. Because that's, I'm not, I'm not questioning, I'm not saying, no, I'm not gonna support it. I put my light on to ask if that was possibly covered or explained in the letter, in the correspondence. And I was hurrying to find it here under correspondence, but I can't. But you have it, so, so there.
Yep. Do you wanna read it? Do you want, do you wanna see it?
I have here, but I was just wondering, was it, was it explained in there?
Well, it just said that, that it didn't, it didn't, it wouldn't make much of a difference.
Oh, wow. And these are people in the industry?
That's, that's the room levy group. So, they've been discussing it. It says they've been discussing it off and on for quite some time. Your, your light's on.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, I read that, not a substantial benefit. And I kind of raised my eye... Yeah, I read that, not a substantial benefit, and I kind of raised my eyeballs on that one because there are a number of places in the town that have five, seven, eight, you know, well, under the 20, that do have rooms, and maybe substantial in their eyes may not be thousands of dollars, but I think, I think the point is, is equalization across the board for all of the hotels in the area. I mean, I'm, I think the point is being made here is that we have some of the hotels and the motels in this community, I think we have 308 rooms in all in the town left, which is sad considering, you know, 15, 20 years ago, we had 1,200, or maybe probably 20 years ago, we had something like 1,200 rooms. But I think it's unfair, when you look at those small, those ones that have more than 20 rooms are the ones that are paying the brunt of marketing and that are doing all the promoting, yet, when I look at some of the other inns and some of the other B&amp;Bs, there, some of them are charging twice what these ones that are members of the room levy group are charging. And yet, they're getting the same benefit, and I think we should be equal across the board. That's all I was saying. So I'm curious as to why, in these times of equality, why the room levy group is saying, no, we don't want equality. In other words, saying, no, we don't want to bring in additional revenue. Because, I'm sorry, but if you add up those other B&amp;Bs and inns, et cetera, that are operating in this community with less than 20, I bet you're probably looking at another 500, maybe 600 room nights during the total year. I may be wrong in that number, but I'm just throwing a number out. Well, heck, that's a few thousand dollars, and that's money that could be going to promote and market Yarmouth, and I think that's something we want to do. So, that's why I would like to get a better explanation. That's all, your worship. I don't know whether that helps you, Counselor Dawes? Does that answer your question?
Help me. Well, it helped me because, well, no, because, because if there's not, if there's not a lot, but it's, it is equalization, and there are quite a number of rooms, too. There are quite a number of rooms. Yeah. CAO?
Thank you, your worship. So if the motion passes, then we'll pass that on to the advisory committee, but I will, in addition to that, I will make sure that you're aware, that you're all aware of when their next meeting is. And it might, it might expedite the, the whole discussion if, if some of you were present and actually had the dialogue with them when they're, when they're talking, I think you'd get a very clear idea of what they're thinking. And again, I apologize, I wasn't at the meeting where they made this ultimate decision, so I can't shed, shed much light into how they came to that conclusion, but a face-to-face would probably help answer all the questions.
It's true. When you, when you explained, it, it helps. It does, it makes it clear. Counselor Dawes, you're on. You're on.
Thank you. Thank you, your worship, and thank you, Mr. Guxue, because that's what I was going to, that's what I was thinking when I read this. These are the pros, they know what they're doing. They're making the recommendation. Are we, I trust in them, however, if we have any questions, I'm sure that they would at any time say, yeah, here, we'll explain it to you, or you're more than welcome to, you're more than welcome to come in and sit in and ask your questions. So, thank you.
So?
That's what I was going to suggest. We, we couldn't.
Okay, let's, what was the motion?
That we request information about the rationale or not changing it.
Okay, good. Questions been called?
Wait a minute, did we vote on them?
No, we're, we're voting on, we're, we're just going to ask them their rationale.
You're very confusing. Yes, you are.
Yeah. But, but really, I encourage you to go to that meeting, because when you explain it that way, it helps. Okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Municipality of Yarmouth, three parade of lights. I know we love parade of lights. So we have a letter from, from Warden Goodwin, and they are looking at the possibility of placing an entry in the Seafest Parade of Lights, and would like to work with us in, in doing that. Counselor Dennis?
Who has the boat?
Better question. Who has the money? I don't know who has the boat. I'll bet you there's a, there's lots of, yeah, there's lots of fishermen, lots of...
Okay, so we'd be borrowing?
We'd probably be borrowing the boat, yeah.
Anybody that has an interest in getting into Parade of Lights, they'll be provided a boat and a cab.
Yeah, yeah.
And decorations. I'm sorry, should I put my light on?
If you have a question.
No, I don't have a question, I was just going to explain.
Okay.
Information, that's all.
Go ahead.
Boats, yes. Counselor Mooney was correct. Anyone who, a boat will, will be provided, and decorations, however you or your, your team, your boatmates want to decorate, everybody that's, that's in that team, they all just donate whatever, whatever decorations and lights that they have. It's a team effort, it's a whole boat team effort.
Okay, so can I ask you a question before you turn your light off?
Yes.
Doesn't have to cost us money?
No, it does not.
Okay.
No, uh-uh. Gas? I don't know. But no, it does not have to cost you any money, no. I've been part of a couple of, couple of, a couple of boat teams in the past.
Okay, good.
And it is a lot of fun.
Yeah, it would be.
It is. And the fun really starts afterwards, when, when you start identifying your own lights, who takes what lights home.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. The Parade of Lights is, is it, it's not put on by the town or their municipality, is it?
It's Seafest.
No, it's usually, isn't it, doesn't Rutter's put that on, isn't it one of their things that they do?
They sponsor it through Seafest, and we fund Seafest, we partially fund Seafest.
So, who do they contact? The people that want to do this?
I would say they would call Seafest. Seafest.
The Seafest, the new Seafest chairperson. Okay, great, thank you.
Well, the Seafest chairperson is still Dawn.
Whoever, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, Dawn Smith, that's who they contact. Right, okay, thanks.
Good. But that's correct, Martha. Martha's right here for Seafest, sorry.
I'm right here.
Okay.
Vote for Biden. You do have to recommend your own decorations. But just, just one comment. The municipality has done a very good job over the last few years. Would you like to give them a...
Okay.
Mr. Mooney?
Did you have a?
Counselor Mooney, I think his light was on before, before mine.
No, it wasn't, because you're, they go on in order.
Oh, all right. Well, if, if all discussion, if all discussions are overdone, everyone agrees, then I would make the motion to accept the invitation of the Warden, Murray Goodwin's invitation to, to collaborate with the Municipality District of Yarmouth in this year's Seafest Parade of Lights event.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Did you like that one? Did I pass? Thank you, okay.
That's good.
Well, you know, it's, it's, it gets easier, the more I can feel your eyes beating on me across the, across the room.
That was, that was close to perfect. Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Okay. What's that? Whoever will send a note out. I'll talk to the warden, and then see when they want to meet, and I'll send a note out, whoever wants to go.
Jeff and Jerry.
Yeah, that's right.
Jeff and Jerry.
Jeff and Jerry, it's got nothing to do.
Your agenda is wide open.
Oh, my dear, help us. Yarmouth. I've seen your office, you're not decorating anything. Can I say that in public? Yarmouth Facade Society requests for amendment. CAO?
Your worship, this is a request from the society that is administering the facade program for the town, and what they're looking for is, I'm just bringing up the document, they're looking to, to amend the eligibility, and so the facade society, the facade society applied to the town of Yarmouth for an amendment to the memorandum of understanding to allow for inclusion of any portion of the building that is predominantly visible from Main Street. And so they're, they're talking about facades of corner, of corner buildings, and they've listed a few examples here, the shop, city drug, et cetera, that have a significant side wall facades. And so this would not affect the maximum eligible funding of those properties, but would allow them to use some of the money that they could access through the town to do a second predominantly visible facade of the building that they have. So they're asking that they be allowed to do that, that's for your consideration.
Okay, so I completely support this. Have you seen the mall shop?
It's beautiful.
It looks awesome. It's so clean and bright, it just lifts the whole corner, and you can't just paint the facade when you're on a corner like that. You really can't. You could.
Is it sweet?
Okay.
I moved this forward.
Okay, moved and seconded. Oh, Counselor, questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, that one's out. Council Advisory Committees, Committee of the Whole, Deputy Mayor. Excuse me. Go ahead.
From the motion from the Committee of Whole, April 23, 2015, this is the first of 99, no, this is number one. I move that Fay Allen be appointed a member of the Communities in Bloom Committee.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, we have Citizen Advisory Committee, Planning Advisory, Deputy?
From a public hearing of earlier this evening, I move to amend the land use bylaw to remove the split zoning of 79 Main Street from low-density residential and secondary commercial to secondary commercial as outlined in Caroline's report.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. And we have, okay, the next one there, deputy is? I have a recommendation from the public hearing, January 8.
Thank you, your worship. So you'll recall that this one dealt with the rezoning of a property on Herbert Street that we had acquired and had an agreement with the previous owner, that he had a buyback clause, and that buyback clause expired on April 1. So we've already done the, the first reading, and we did the public hearing in January, but the, the previous owner reminded us that there were still a few months left on that agreement for which he could redeem the property, and he wished it not to be rezoned or changed until that agreement had expired. The agreement has now expired, and so we're bringing it back to the table for your consideration.
It expired as of April 1?
So, I move to amend the land use bylaw to rezone numbers 2 and 6, Herbert Street, from low des, low-density residential R1 to open space 01, as outlined in Caroline's report.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Heritage Advisory Committee, 90 Water. Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. We had a public meeting, public hearing earlier this evening with regard to 90 Water Street, where we invited the public to make submissions with regard to the designation of 90 Water Street as a municipally heritage building. Subsequently, I'd like to make a motion upon recommendation of the Heritage Advisory Committee that 90 Water Street be designated as a municipal heritage building.
So moved.
Sir?
And seconded. Any discussion?
Question?
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Reports for information. I, I have a question. That's not very many motions from committees of the whole, three committee of the whole meetings.
Most of it budget.
Did you notice that? They were, weren't they? That's exactly it. It was, it was mostly budget. Okay. All right, and we have, okay, Communities in Bloom, Counselor?
We had a meeting of the Communities in Bloom Committee yesterday, and I apologize to council, we were kind of close in the same reason, because of UNSM. Three items came up for council to consider. First of all, council, we did give a notice to council that we were involved with the Blue Dot Initiative by David Suzuki, and as a result, the Communities in Bloom Committee at its meeting is making a recommendation to Yarmouth Town Council to accept the, the document that we have brought before you. I circulated today. If council wants to take time to consider it, or move it to another meeting, that's fine, too, but it's, this model that we're using is the model that was used by the city of Dundas, and is that what they were using. So far, there are 28 municipalities across Canada that have endorsed this. We would be probably the first in Atlantic Canada, I believe. Basically, the resolution that I would like to move, that the Yarmouth Town Council endorse the following resolution and authorize our mayor to sign this declaration on behalf of council. The declaration simply, that we're simply stating, be it resolved that the town of Yarmouth endorses the following declaration, that all people have the right to live in a healthy environment, including the right to breathe clean air, the right to drink clean water, the right to consume safe food, the right to assess, access nature, the right to know about pollutants and contaminants released into the local environment, and the right to participate in decision-making that will affect the environment. Further, that the town of Yarmouth has the responsibility within its jurisdiction to respect, protect, and fulfill and promote these rights. Thirdly, the town of Yarmouth shall apply the precautionary principle, whereas threats of serious or irreversible damage to human health or environment exist, the town shall take cost-effective measures to prevent the degradation of the environment and protect the health of its citizens. Further, the town will consider the cost of human health and environment. When the town of Yarmouth is evaluating reasonably foreseeable costs of proposed actions and alternatives, the town will consider cost to human health and environment. And finally, the town shall review the objectives, targets, timelines, and actions in its integrated community sustainability plan and evaluate progress towards fulfilling this declaration. If I have a second or? Thank you, Counselor Mooney. We're doing pretty well all of this now, and I think CAO can pretty well comment. We have a very good ICSP, the, so it's, it's more or less reaffirming, and it's kind of nice that we do have this, this work that our former planner did and staff have done on the Integrated Community Sustainability Plan, so it kind of goes hand in hand with that. So there's no financial commitment, there's no financial concerns, it's basically just putting a little extra support to what we've already done in our ICSP. So that's the recommendation of our, of our committee.
Good. Counselor McCaughlin?
Thank you. Deputy Mayor had his light on first.
It was, it's been on for a while.
Oh, thank you. I'm supportive of this, but I just got one question to Jeff, has our solicitor looked at this document? And if he hasn't, should he?
I'm not aware that he has. I, I assume he reviews the items that are on the council agenda prior to the meeting, but as, as you know, he wasn't able to be with us this evening, so I can't say for certain that he has. Certainly hasn't communicated anything back to me to that effect.
He hasn't communicated?
He's not communicated.
Has he looked at the document?
I, I can't say for certain.
So maybe, perhaps he, that's why he didn't communicate back, maybe. Would you think it would be fair for him to look at this document at, at first? I mean, it's, I think we're all in agreement, but we have to do our due diligence, you know, around this table, so I'd be more comfortable if he looked at this, and if there's, I'm sure everything's good, but we, we should do our due diligence, so that's the only concern I have.
Your worship, if I may, if, if the second or is in agreement, and, and I agree with Counselor McCaughlin, because this is coming up, and there may be something in there that we're not dotting our i's or crossing our t's, so I think, your worship, if Counselor Mooney will agree, if I could add at the beginning of my motion, that I'm making a notice of motion that at our next council meeting, I will move. Okay, so just, we'll make this a notice of motion, and therefore, it's not debatable, we can just move it, let the solicitor, and then we can let him look at it, come back to us, and then we'll make it as a notice of motion. I think that would be the best way of handling this.
Good. Okay, so we're good. Councillor Dawes, you're on.
Thank you, Your Worship. Good move, good decision, Councillor Langill. I support this as well, but number three, I have, I do have some questions about number three, and I'm sure that the solicitor can answer those once he's had a chance to peruse this and advise us.
Good. Okay, so we're good. So you're on to the second one? I did hit your button. Somebody else is on?
Yep. Thank you, Mayor Mood. Your Worship, the second motion is probably going to fit in the same category, because in fairness, we just got our report, you were circulated a report from Rodney Doucette with her Public Works Department with regard to the work that our committee has been working on with the Milton Park. At our meeting yesterday, we were shown the plan of Milton Park, and I had hoped that council would have had a look at this. So I'm simply going to make this a notice of motion as well. And my, simply to advise council that at the June meeting of council, I will be making a motion upon recommendation of the Communities in Bloom, that the town of Yarmouth received the recommendations from the Subcommittee on the New Doug Malonson Park, with the understanding that it's been referred to the Parks Department and approval from Milton Improvement Society.
What did you just, did you just say you're doing a notice?
A notice of motion. That way, we can get, Mayor Mood, we'll be able to get the plans to council so they can see that plan, and we'll make sure that you'll have the details, because in fairness, it's kind of like almost a pick and a poke here tonight without you guys having the information you need.
Excellent. Do you need a second or? You're just going to move that, okay. And the third one? The third one?
This we can do.
This we can do. There was discussion at the Communities in Bloom, and we, the motion that we're recommending, the Communities in Bloom Committee recommends that council send letters to Tri-County Restorative Justice, the Community Deterrence Program, and probation servicing services welcoming community service workers to assist in keeping the town clean. And if there's a second or, the, some of the committee members brought up yesterday to assist with town staff. We do have a number of community service orders that are issued by the courts, and it might be nice if maybe some of these individuals may be attached to the town somehow to assist. And I know Councillor Mooney and Councillor Dennis are members of the committee, they may want to chime in, but it's pretty well just a request to them to see if they would consider signing some to our staff.
Good. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Questions being called? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
And that was brought forward by Dave Solis, who's an educator and has worked with, worked within the system and along with some help from the Chair of the Communities in Bloom. I think it's a question that's posed to you almost every month about youth or anybody else doing damage to public property, especially we had the damage here last year with the garbage cans and the receptacles that were smashed and obliterated. How we can make citizens more accountable, and I think this might be a step if we can just give a little nudge to the people that are in positions of making these decisions to maybe help, help them get on a little better, straighter path.
Good. Okay. Questions being called, all those in favor? Contrary, motion carried. I've got additions. I got a mayor's report, and it's very short because we covered most of it. And Tina, it'll be a little bit longer for you when you get it. As I read this, the Nova Star is about 50 miles offshore, and will dock here tomorrow at 9:00 a.m., that's Friday morning. We all share in the excitement of another tourist season, and while the docking of the ship should serve as a reminder of the hard-fought battle to see the service returned, and the damage done in the four years without the service, that in turn should cause each and every one of us to step up any way we can to ensure our visitors know just how important they and the service is to us in Yarmouth and to the entire province. The fight isn't over. There's been much heated discussion over the past year with regard to the ship, and as the provincial government is committed to both the service and to watching this year closely with a plan in mind, it's important that we continue to put our best foot forward this season. And our best foot is certainly showing up on Main Street. A drive from Yarmouth South through the downtown reveals a great deal of work being done. The facade program's in full swing with a number of businesses making improvements. The $0.5 million given by the federal government for our downtown revitalization will be put to good use very soon as the street skates through bumpouts and more will start to evolve. Hawthorne Street improvements are ongoing and should be completed over the next couple of months. And if you head to the farmer's market on Saturday mornings, you'll have a firsthand view of all the work being done there. Potholes are a huge concern here, just as they are in most municipalities throughout the entire country. It was an extremely rough winter for the roads. The crews are hard at work filling the potholes as quickly and as efficiently as they can, and I might add that they are not starting at one end and going to the other. Instead, they're covering roads in all areas of town as they come by the areas of biggest concern. It's important that we're patient, as there's much to be done, and more so that we're thankful for all the hours the teams are putting in. Lisa Snow's gone for a few months. Some may have noticed the lake level is quite low at mile, the anticipation of higher rainfalls, which didn't materialize, meant that the dam was lowered. What is important to note is that it's gaspere season, and we understand that, and the town will be pumping water down the fish ladder to facilitate climbing as the tide rises, ensuring the fish can follow the natural process and finding their place to spawn. So that will, it's actually taking place now. Teams with the All Hands on Deck Initiative have been quietly making plans over the winter months, and within the next month, you'll see activity from a number of these teams. If you're looking to help with painting, murals, flower gardens, and more, don't hesitate to contact me. And actually, what happens with some of these teams is Councillor Dennis has a group that some of these people go to. Councillor Langill has the Communities in Bloom, that a lot of people end up taking part in various activities. This community always steps up in a big way when there's work to be done, and thanks to all of you, we won't lose our momentum. I also want to mention that May 17th to 23rd has been declared VON Week, and thank you, Councillor Dawes, for bringing that to my attention. Councillor Dawes and I were just at Beacon Church this evening, where Suzanne Dontrmont was actually celebrated for 30 years' work with the VON. So it was, it was a really great evening. So we celebrate and thank the VON certainly for their work in the community. Finally, this evening, the budget was passed. All the information, I think the CAO went over, except for also within the budget, we are funding a new bus service that will start in the fall. We're funding the Main Street facade program, have new grants for heritage properties. The streetlights have been converted to LED, which converts to a saving in excess of $75,000 a year as well. Our Harbour South Medical Clinic is fully staffed, which reduces the town's costs. Having the high school passed to us will cost us an extra $125,000 per year to maintain, but we are certainly in the process of finding appropriate uses for that building. That's ongoing. We also signed new inter-municipal agreements, which changed the, changes the joint funding agreements, which is good for all partners. And with regard to the budget, I can say this bluntly, there's not a lot of wiggle room in this year's budget. I think everyone at this table understands it. But I guess the upside to this is that we always continue to look diligently at everything that comes across our desk, and sometimes we have to say no, but we consider everything, understanding that everything costs money, and there are a lot of things to take into consideration. We're looking forward to a great summer with the ship and the visitors and lots of work. We're all thankful that the snow is gone, the sun is shining, and of course, we wouldn't want to be anywhere else but Yarmouth, on the edge of everywhere. Short and sweet. Longer for you, Tina. Go ahead, CAO.
Your Worship, just, I want to just clarify one small point, and that is around Hawthorne Street. That project should be complete within the next two weeks.
Two weeks?
Two weeks.
Woo, that's amazing, because we were looking at three months.
Yeah, so they're doing, they're doing great work, and I was on-site just today, and the foreman on the site confirmed that two weeks is the timeline, so.
That is excellent. Excellent. Councillor Dennis is going to ask a question. Go ahead.
Can we just, for the public's sake, exactly say exactly what was done on Hawthorne Street?
Yeah, the, below the surface, water line was replaced, sewer line was replaced. We're going to be doing a, the stormwater on the street is going to be handled in a progressive way with rain gardens and other methods, others, let's say, non-traditional methods of dealing with stormwater. The street is being defined with curbing on both sides, and all of the driveways are being defined loosely. There will be sidewalks on both sides of the, of the street, and there will be a, I guess I would say cobblestone pedestrian area immediately in front of the farmer's market. So for pedestrians and people looking to congregate on the street when the farmer's market is open, I think that'll be a nice amenity. Believe there will be trees and perhaps some street furniture as well. So when it's done, the street will be better defined. It is not a wide street, so it'll be a slow-traffic street. And they've actually added a little bit of curvature to the street, so it won't be just a straight shot down Hawthorne, but it'll actually be a couple of gentle curves in it.
Good. Okay, questions for committee chairs, anyone? Excuse me, Councillor Mooney?
Yeah, and we have the boat coming in, and I hope everybody goes down to see it tomorrow. But I just want people to go down and look at Scotia Garden and the job that they've done in front of that facility. You would not believe it's a fish plant, but I think we need some of that tender, loving care at the terminal too, because it's not, you can see what Tim can do. I think we need some painting. I'm talking about crosswalks in front of the terminal. I noticed they're desperate shape, or crosswalks, and I think, I don't know if we're going to do that or if we bring that up again on Tuesday night with the Yarmouth Area Industrial Commission. But I think this is a project that's a little bigger than All Hands on Deck. This has to be something that's municipally driven, because we have to take pride in that facility, and we are the first point of entry. But I encourage everybody around the table and anybody in the audience just to drive down Water Street and look at Scotia Garden. Mr. Kaiser and his crew have done a fantastic job.
Certainly. Go ahead.
I want to comment on that, because I had the opportunity a couple of months ago to meet with Mr. Kaiser, and I commended him on the work that his employees do every year on the property in front. And he explained it to me, and he said, you know, we're in the food processing business. And we take a lot of pride in our cleanliness and how we handle people's food. And he said, we think that how our building presents on the street is a reflection of how we care when we do our work. And so that's part of their, part of their brand and part of their message to the community is how they look after their property, and I think it's, it's well noticed, yeah.
Councillor Dennis?
I just have a question on who's responsible for the flag at the terminal.
If it's on the property, then it would be the lessee, or lessor? Be Nova Star.
It's just because the flag that's flying there looks pretty terrible. And we have the ship coming in tomorrow, and plus also, it's been brought to my attention about the flag here in front of the Senatave, that it's, the Canadian flag is just hanging there by one end, which looks terrible. So if we could get those fixed up, maybe?
Sure.
Can we do? We have to do that ferry terminal before tomorrow. Well, they're just coming to pick up stuff, but they'll be here for a week. Okay? additions. Fire department, tender, pumper rescue. All those in favor? Right, chief?
Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay. Take your time. Get that done, and then we're just on the, no, you can only do one thing at once.
Yeah, and I was doing the wrong one. So you're looking at the fire truck tender recommendation, okay. So as council's aware, we did an RFP process to replace two vehicles with one, a pumper rescue. And the chief has reviewed the two proposals that were received, and he's recommending that council reject both bids submitted and approve a new tendering for the purchase of a pumper rescue. And we, I support that recommendation. I believe we can get more competitive bids and better value for money, or clearly more value for money through redoing the process, so that is for your consideration.
Good? Yes, motion. Motion to reject. Well, can we, are we allowed to do that? Negative motion? No, it's not a negative motion. We're rejecting. Okay, good? Yes, exactly. Okay, so moved and seconded, all those in favor? Contrary, motion carried. Gleeb Street? Councillor Dennis?
I was just wondering about the Gleeb Street report, when, if we could get a copy of that report. Thanks.
Good. WDC, Derek Robertson. I think that was you, deputy? Go ahead.
Earlier in the evening, I asked for consideration for a young man by the name of Derek Robertson to be appointed to the Waterfront Development Corporation. Derek was on the list of people who submitted participation on this committee, and we didn't at that time appoint him. I'm asking for your support in asking a young man, Derek Robertson, to be part of the Waterfront Development Corporation. So moved.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Go ahead.
Just a question, I don't know my notes, but I'm going to the CEO. Number one, the way the Waterfront Development Corporation works, I believe, is seats are assigned to different sectors. Are we still doing that? And if so, where would Mr. Robertson fit? And secondly, do we have seats available on the Waterfront Development Corporation? I vaguely remember I thought the designated seats were filled, but I'm not, I just, that was my question before. I'm very supportive of the motion, and definitely respected Deputy Mayor's, but I would want to make sure that we do have space, and number two, if he fits within the criteria of the, and I don't know, maybe, I don't want to bog this down, but.
No, I would have to review that. I would have to review that. I can't tell you for certain. I believe there are seats available, but as far as the designation within the bylaws, I can't speak to that.
Okay.
May I suggest to the motion, so that we can expedite it, that maybe with the, with the understanding that there is seats available, and that Mr., is it Mr. Robertson, I believe you said, Jim, and what? That Mr. Robertson fits the criteria of the Waterfront Development Corporation. Is that agreeable? Yeah, and I seconded.
Good, okay. Questions being called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Councillor Dawes? Congrats and acknowledgement. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. No motion here, I just wanted to share an observation, and also I wanted to comment on something that I believe is very important. Oh, are you okay? I thought you were... Okay. I know I, as a councillor. This is choking him up. Hope he's all right. I know I. And you're cracking up. What is so funny?
We don't know what the motion, we don't know what the...
There is no motion. Yes, I can, I can feel your gentle gaze right across the room. Now, I know I, as a councillor, I feel proud that we're making progress towards Yarmouth's business renaissance, and there are signs all over the place, everywhere, there are new businesses opening, new facade program that started, that's exciting. And of course, the boat's returning. But I'd like to point out that Yarmouth was built by small businesses, and it continues to grow through small businessmen, in fact, all across Canada. The small business is the financial backbone, the economic backbone of not only the country, but our town. And one business person in particular, he's just recently celebrated his 2050 year here in business in town, in this Roland Fitzgerald. There is a man on Pleasant Street, he was there for many years, and he's back again now. He has top-line sales, but in aggregate, he just put a full 25 years of business under his belt here in town. He's built a successful business, he's provided jobs here for, over the last 25 years, and he has always, always had a sign out front in support and recognizing. You always knew what was going on in town, because he always had a little sign of recognition for local events going on. So that is why I brought this up. I just wanted to acknowledge that and to congratulate him for 25 solid, successful years in business. him for twenty-five solid, successful years in business here in town on Pleasant Street. Thank you, your worship, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Yeah, that's great.
Hundred and twenty-five, yeah.
We're going to put Jim in with the Canada's hundred and fiftieth. No, we're not, Jim, you're a young whippersnapper.
Most Canada liked before Confederation, Jim.
Approval of invoices.
Second.
Date of next meeting, June the eleventh. And a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
There's no in camera, so we're good to go.
My mom's taking it.
You notice that disgusting yambo came, my mom is taking it?
I heard too.
By the way, you're home, you might see the last event.
That's almost.
Well, I'll see, we'll ask twenty.
We should tell you that ending, you don't know how to start any time.
I didn't watch, maybe two or three of those, but that's one of them.